No, I really don't know what to say.
I'd like to call a regular meeting of April 5th, 2022 of Mentor City Council order invocation will be given by Councilman Krieger.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
With the blessings to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Marn.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Council, in receipt of the March 15th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Before we proceed, we have a, let's see, we have a council roll here that I'm going to read. The rules of council address persons before council and do permit members of the public to speak at the beginning of the meeting. 115.04 has the order of business as follows: Roll call, approval of minutes, persons before council, public hearings, legislation before council, et cetera, in sum. If someone wants to speak at the beginning of the meeting regarding legislation, after approval of the minutes, the council president could call upon them to speak on a topic in this agenda. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this agenda? Seeing no one wants to speak, we will proceed with the meeting. We have a public hearing.
Mr. President, could I maybe ask for a clarification on that persons before council? When you say legislate, you mean items on the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you might want to clarify that to the public.
Items on the agenda this evening. Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, Mr. President.
Part two, just want to clarify that when an ordinance or resolution comes up, people could still speak on that particular.
Okay, good, all right. Correct.
Now we'll move on to, we have a public hearing.
Yes, I was correct.
Mr. Kinnney, that? Mr. Philippiak, oh, Resolution 22-R-105, that's our public hearing. Julie?
A resolution approving with modifications the application of Deborah Al Cuivela for the placement of farmland in an agricultural district to wit approximately 35.80 acres of land located on Lake Shore Boulevard.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Counsel, this is a renewal application for Mrs. Cuivela to continue to allow her property to be placed into CAUV status. This allows for the next five years for any special assessments on the property to be deferred until such time as that property is repurposed for a purpose other than farming. As we understand it, the farming that continues on the property is tree farming, nursery stock, and timber.
Are there any comments from the applicant? Is the applicant here? The applicant is here. Please come up and state your name and address for the clerk.
Uh-oh. Hi, I'm Deb Cuivela.
Hello.
It was a pumpkin in April. Always have weird stuff in our house that really belongs outside. So, five years comes around quickly. I'm still trying to grow and perfect pumpkins, still battling brown hog, the stink bugs, the weed, the possum, the deer, mice, the weather, the weeds. It's mostly the weeds, but I'd like to continue doing that battle for five years more with you. Farmland in the agricultural district. My farm is a pumpkin farm mostly. We grow lesser crops such as blueberries, and we do have timber, so the tree farm designation, if you've seen my sign, comes from managing the forest for wildlife and water entertainment. That's where that tree farm sign, that's something that's designated from the forestry. I need to get closer to this? Probably. So, over the last five years, I've grown a 20-year-old into being my repairman, fixing all the 1950 farmer, farm tractors, and you know those 1950 tractors, us old ones, were the best workhorses. So, I've got that taken care of. I've grown a 19-year-old into being my web designer, so watch for pop-up later this year. Me, I'm still battling all the critters and the insects and the weather and the weeds to perfect pumpkins, of which we grow about 1,000 plants a year, which would typically give you 4,000 pumpkins, but with the battle of the critters, don't get that much. I'm for agricultural and family fun. We have a lot of families come out in the fall, October is our season that we're open. Many people have enjoyed not only buying pumpkins, but bowling with squash, trying to get out of a maze by turning right only, trying to guess educational things such as, do these sink or do these float in the bucket of water that all the two-year-olds want to climb into. So, I'd like to continue keeping my farm in agricultural district and making fall and pumpkins and families bring fun to mentor. Thank you in advance, and please consider continuing for five more years in agricultural district.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deb. And good luck with everything.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Counsel, in receipt of all the correspondence received pertaining to this matter, this public hearing is adjourned. Tabled legislation, we have none new legislation. Resolution number 22-R-105.
A resolution approving with modifications the application of Deborah Al Cuivela for the placement of farmland in agricultural district to wit approximately 35.80 acres of land located on Lake Shore Boulevard.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Resolution number 22-R-105 has been adopted. Ordinance number 22-O-022.
An ordinance authorizing a settlement agreement in the matter of Charles M. Andrews trustee, et cetera, versus City of Mentor amending the catified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by the rezoning pursuant to development plan of permanent parcels 16A-007-0-00-004-0, 005-0, and 011-0 located on Garfield Road from R4 Single Family District Residential District to RVG Village Green District and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak, anything on that?
No, defer to Mr. Zeeman.
Mr. Zeeman.
Yes, thank you, Council President, members of council. Before you is a proposed settlement in the litigation which has been pending for several years now in the U.S. District Court. The city has been represented by outside counsel and attorneys at the Law Firm of Gallagher Sharp. I've assisted in that litigation as co-chair of that council. In order to resolve the matter, the request was for a legislative solution. Legislative solution would be a rezoning of the property to RVG under a modified development plan. If council accepts that and does rezone the property, then the pending lawsuit will simply be dismissed, all claims having been waived. The attorneys at Gallagher Sharp have reviewed the legal terms of that and they are, find it acceptable, as do I. The specific changes to the development plan that are proposed, in addition to, there's the elimination of five sublots that were originally proposed, so going from 40 proposed down to the number of 35 total sublots. That, in terms of material changes therefore, the entire project area, if you measure from the center line of Garfield Road, of the three parcels is 16.66 acres, a little bit over that. Outside of the right-of-way, it's a little bit smaller, it's a little bit closer to 16.15. But with the elimination of some of those five sublots, the open space, now that's outside of any right-of-way, that is outside of any individual subplot, the total open space would be 16.25, almost .26 acres.
16, you said, it's six.
6.25, correct, outside of the, that area, which is about, so that's the open space. Again, pursuant to the terms of the agreement and the RVG, the old RVG district regulations, that remains perpetual open space. You know, no timber harvesting, no clearcutting, anything of that, of that nature. That does preserve the wetlands and also preserves a significant buffer area between this property and Belkloane. So, that brings the, and again, these are relevant to the RVG district regulations, that brings the total open space to 37.5 percent. That's outside of any right-of-way. The acreage inside of the right-of-way, that's the new proposed Echo Hill Manor Drive, is approximately 2.84 acres. That would be just over 17 percent of the total acreage. And so, the areas that would be within the sublots themselves, owned in fee simple by whomever the homeowners would be, would be 7.55 acres and some change, which would be just a little over 45 percent of the total area. So, it's, those are some of the new numbers that this proposal is. There's architectural standards which are in front of the council as well, as well as some other aspects limiting the nature of the builders, the developer slash owner. Is an agreement that local custom builders, which are defined as, as local builders that only produce about less than 100, give or take, you know, construction projects a year, would be the sole exclusive builders that could come in here. That is to, you know, get some variety in terms of the architectural style, and they've also agreed that the fair market value of these lots, in other words, that they would be selling them for on the open market, would average $100,000 per sublot. Some of them would be a little bit less, some of them could be a little bit more, of course, but those are some of the material aspects of the settlement agreement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman. Mr. Zeeman, I do have a legal question. I have an applicant who's on Eleanor Court, and from what I read, he can speak now?
Yes.
All right. John Cabot, would you like to speak now? You have, you turned a form in that you would like to speak.
Hello, my name is John Cabot. I live on Eleanor Court. Thank you for the opportunity to ask you a couple of questions.
Thanks, John.
To be clear, for the amount of property that's going to be designated for housing, could you tell me how big those lots would be and how many houses it would add up to?
Did you hear?
Yes. No more than 35 homes may be built, and the lots vary in size depending on where you are. Sublot number one, for example, is proposed at just under a half an acre. Now, when you get towards the center, I'll hold it up, I know the TV cameras can't catch that, but just for your benefit, sir, when you get towards the center where the units are truly clustered, those are coming in a little less than 220, .2 of an acre. Then when you get around the turn towards the back, you're going to get a higher third of an acre, for example, sublots 19 and 20, closer to a quarter acre for sublots 11 and 10. Excuse my, these are bifocals, so excuse me. And then likewise, sublots 8 and 9, those are around a third of an acre. So, they vary a little bit in size, but primarily when you're in the center of the development, those are when they're, they're the smaller, closer to 2/10 of an acre.
Another question is, if the zoning didn't change, how many houses would have been allowed? I know it was a half-acre residential arrangement, again, with the amount of property that's available for building. If the zoning did not change, how many houses are we talking about?
30 would be a theoretical maximum, and when I say theoretical, that, that depends on how the site would lay out.
Okay, all right. So, we're compromising five, five houses compared to the original or the more recent proposal that there should be 40 houses as Anderson's requested. Am I correct about that?
Yes, John, I think it started at 41, and then it went to 40, and then back to 41, and then to 37, and then to 35, and when we had our neighborhood meeting, the consensus was we needed to give our law director somewhere to, somewhere to go, somewhere to start. And I'm actually very proud of Joe, the way he did this. He went through a serious battle, and, and he actually got the number that came out of that meeting, and I think it's, I'm pretty proud of what he did.
Then just another question, and I think Mr. Zeeman mentioned this, but to be a little more specific, some of the other characteristics that the Andrews proposed for the development of the Village Green area, do those things stand? For example, at one time he was talking about building a pavilion of sorts in the, in Village Green area and also putting some kind of lanterns or structure in the entranceway. Are things like that still negotiable? Are those a part of the deal?
There would be some type of a landscaped entry feature. Now, the exact nature of that feature would be something that would go through the administrative review process. This would basically, if council accepts it tonight, this would be preliminary development plan approval. The way it works then administratively is because when you go from preliminary to final, there's technical drawings that, that get done, for example, stormwater calculations so that you can get the exact size of any detention basin, final grade, all of those things. Included in that would be a landscape plan, and so part of the landscape plan would be what type of entry features to the development would be approved and appropriate. Developer does want, and part of the agreement is, some type of a landscaped entry feature, but its exact nature is not defined. That's something that can be worked out with final. The pavilion is not a component of the settlement agreement. It doesn't mean that it can't, if, if the parties agree, have a pavilion or not. Again, that's, that's, that's an item that would be worked out between preliminary and final if this is approved.
Okay. And this might be a stupid question, but, so this has all been, when we had our meeting, we were talking about putting out a number that would represent the residents' compromise. I'm getting the impression it's, it's further than that now, that you guys have talked to the Andrews and they've agreed to the 35 house?
Well, the attorneys, of course, conducted all negotiations, including our outside counsel. This is their settlement proposal, and therefore it has been presented. So, this is something that if the council approves it tonight, it's a done deal. If council doesn't approve it tonight, then the litigation continues. So, this is council's opportunity, and, and the council's vote must occur in a public meeting of this nature. So, it's deliberations and the ultimate vote to approve or disapprove the settlement agreement can only occur during the course of the public meeting. So, having received a, a complete settlement agreement, one whose legal terms are acceptable to the city's legal counsel, it is up to the council then to determine whether or not the substance of it and, and whether or not it's good zoning practice to, to rezone this property to RVG pursuant to this plan is something that they want to approve tonight. So, it's, there's been no decisions made except that it's ripe for action, whatever that action might be.
Okay. Well, thank you for listening to me and answering my questions, that's all.
Mr. President? John, thanks for your time and, and your help through this process, too. Thank you. Mr. President? Mr. Kirchner.
I think that pavilion was something that the planning commission wanted the developer to put. I don't think the developer was, wanted to put that in, it was the.
Or the neighbors, yeah.
Planning commission.
Right.
And I think ultimately, that's common property, and if they, and they will have a homeowner's association, if that homeowner's decides, association decides they want to do something with that property, then that's up to them, but, you know, it wasn't something that was put in by the developer, it was, it was put in by the planning commission, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Anyone else? Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Before I vote on this, I'd like to say, like our council president already mentioned, three of our colleagues along with the law director drafted this settlement agreement, and obviously when they drafted it, it was to the benefit of both, well, at the time to the war because our war councilman designed it. And with that in mind, my hands, hat goes off to you guys doing a great job in getting this out of litigation, so my vote is yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-O-022 has passed. Ordinance number 22-O-023.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Snyder Recreation Inc. for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Springwood Gardens Park under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This was a budgeted item. This is actually one of the final Phase III items to be completed at Springwood Gardens Park. The playground equipment comes in just under the budgeted amount, and it is on a part of the state bidders list. We ask for council's approval.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Oh. Mr. Blake.
It's a great design, it's a great apparatus. Exactly where is it going in the park in terms of where it's going to land? That's sort of like in where the new pavilion's going to, going to go, or?
So, it's going to be, let's see, get my orientation right, immediately east of the first parking lot, lot is drive-in on the left.
Okay. All right, so that's kind of in front of where the pavilion.
Exactly.
So, it's accessible from the front.
Yeah, we expect that one of the pavilions, the pavilion would be there, exactly.
And you know the great thing, because this is for kids, the bathroom will be close by.
Yes.
So, thank you. Looks great.
Move to suspend.
My pleasure, go ahead. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-O-023 is approved. Ordinance number 22-O-024.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with PNC Equipment Finance for the lease and installation of 70 geo-fencing units and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a 72-month agreement. The agreement is for $1,416.10 per month. This is why it comes to you, because we're getting a price break for entering into a longer term. We talked about this a little bit at budget time. Essentially, this is employing technology to provide protection to the areas in and around and on our putting surfaces at the Blackbrook Golf Course. This will inhibit carts from encroaching to, to close proximity to those sensitive areas in and around the greens, and it's geo-encoded to, to actually stop the vehicle, physically stop the vehicle if you go beyond that geo-fencing that would be established by, by our staff.
That's not fair to golfers like me.
Mr. President?
Close enough to the green most of the time, Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Krieger. Good one. Just clarify on this geo-system now, it'll stop, the cart, the cart actually shuts off, is that correct?
It actually stops running, right, if you get too close. You'll be able to reverse.
Yeah.
So, you can reverse and get back.
And I understand, somebody mentioned that, that'll happen a couple of times, but then it completely shuts off.
No, I mean, you, if you, if you get beyond, and there'd be obviously signs that tell you, you can't go any closer to the green than this point. It also is, it also will keep people from veering off the cart path on days where it's cart path only.
Well, it doesn't completely shut off, though.
It does not.
Okay.
Well, it, it does completely stop, but then you reverse it and get back on, and then you can proceed in the forward direction.
All right, thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-O-024 is approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have none. Managers report.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, we have one open pavement cut request from, on Mentor Avenue at 9055 from Hercules Fire Protection for the installation of a six-inch water fire line at, for the Mentor Daycare Academy, which is the former Mean Mugs.
Yeah. Counsel?
Move to approve.
Mr. Blake?
I just have a question about that, because this, this is a big pavement cut. This is just a water line for their sprinklers only, or is this a, a complete water line for them, water?
Just to service.
Justice.
Just to service the building.
Okay, and that's necessary because it's going to be a daycare?
Yes, because it changes occupancy at that point.
So, the previous building wasn't sprinkled, then?
Correct.
Surprising. Well, not surprising, because they had a fire. All right.
I didn't tell you about it, I normally, the chief could fill you in.
Chief, would you like to say something? Go ahead.
Manager's correct, it's a change of occupancy, it requires fire protection for safety reasons, and so the water line is to service the protection system.
Okay, so I, I guess I got to stop getting my information from Facebook. I think that's what I learned. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, Scott.
There is a difference between a restaurant that serves alcohol and a bar that serves food. I learned all about that, too, last summer. So, everyone knows, because you're going to get asked that.
Is there going to be a test?
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, the Mentor Library Shed Day is on Saturday, April 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Express Shedding, 8001 Moving Way. This is a free service for library patrons and Mentor residents. Up to five boxes or bags of documents per car will be accepted. There are still a few sponsorship opportunities available for Mentor Rocks and other great Mentor events. If you've been to the amphitheater for a Mentor Rocks concert or other event, you know that we're all about promoting great family fun. This is the perfect opportunity to showcase your company or organization while supporting to Center Street to accommodate the increase in demand. The deadline for inclusion is April 15th or until all available spots are sold. If you're interested in participating, please get on our City of Mentor, please click on cityofmentor.com on the Hometown Heroes link under the Quick Links tab. Just a reminder to our residents, the due date for filing municipal income taxes returns, income tax returns for calendar year 2021 is April 18th. And tax returns can be filed directly on the Rita website at www.ritaohio.com. I'll also remind residents that for the third year now, almost, well, start of the third year, Rita does not have a physical presence in this building. So, if you need tax assistance, you either want to call or get online to talk to them. Our staff obviously does help out folks when they come in, and, but we, we don't actually perform tax returns on private residents' behalf, so, just, as we do at this time of the year, we still see a lot of people coming in looking for that, that direct assistance. Registration for the summer recreation programs began this week and is now open to all residents and non-residents. The Adult Flashlight Dash Egg Hunt at Blackbrook Golf Course still has openings for this Saturday evening. Pre-registration is required. It's only open to adults 21 and over, and you could contact our recreation department for more information on that. Counsel, we have a new, one new business to bring to your attention, the Wellness Connection at 8500 Station Street in the Matchworks Building, and we want to thank them for their investment in the community, and we wish them great success. And finally, counsel, I want to bring to your attention that Mr. Zan Pedro, our very faithful assistant city manager, this will be his last time appearing before you in that position. He's moving on to a very responsible position here in Lake County. And so, on my behalf, I want to just thank him for 15-plus years of tremendous loyal service to the community and to this administration. We've able to achieve a lot of great things together. So, congratulations, Tony, on your new appointment.
Tony, a pleasure working with you, buddy. Now you're next door, and we get to work with you at the city next door, so that's, that's going to work out good.
Township.
Township for everybody.
Can you, can you tell us what you're doing next, Tony?
I'm sorry.
Can you tell us what you're going to do?
Yes, so, nice career opportunity to move along to Painsville Township to become their new township administrator.
Excellent.
So, thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marn?
This is Zan Pedro. It's been an honor and privilege to work with you the last 15-plus years. Personally, you became a great friend, and when I come up with these off-the-wall ideas and always kind of run them by you, what we can do and can't do, you always give me a great answer. I've just ran into a former city manager, John Conrad, about two weeks ago, and by his tenure, I told him the best thing he ever did was hire you. So, I appreciate all the service you've done, both inside the building, dealing with human resources, dealing with all the unions and our contracts, but you've done a great job, and you always came forth with a lot of great ideas, and you were truly remiss. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Second. Thank you, Tony. Mr. Philippiac, is that it?
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Clerk's correspondence.
Counsel is in receipt of a liquor permit transfer from MB15 Inc., DBA Quickies Drive-Thru to Quickies Mentor Ohio LLC, DBA Quickies Drive-Thru. That is all.
Thank you, Julie. Commissioner and Committee reports, you're in the receipt of the Mentor, you're the municipal planning commission, March 3rd, 2022 minutes. Old business, we have none. Oops, I'm sorry. Mr. Blake?
I hate to bring this up under old business, but I want to wish Janet Dowling a happy birthday.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
And my, my other question is, Ken, do we still have the Rita drop box downstairs?
Do.
Okay.
Happy birthday, Janet.
Happy birthday, Janet. Birthday, Janet.
Old business, we had some, Janet, and then we, new business, we have none. Persons before counsel, we have none. Do I have a motion? Move to adjourn. Second. Meeting is adjourned.